The first, I guess, only item on the business is 10 Chestnut Street. We have this referral from the Board of Trustees, just a petition to request a change of zoning from R3 to Business. And Doug, I've got to tell you, I'm confused about this because it seems like anything you're asking for in your petition is a legal accessory use.
Well, with all due respect, good evening, Gene. How are you doing?
Oh, well.
We're not asking for anything specific at all. That's exactly it. We're asking for a zoning map amendment, as you said, change the zoning from R3 to Business, so that Mark and his LLC have options in which to see what direction the market may point him. And as he can describe for you, the market is changing rapidly. One thing that they have done is prepared designs, Alton View prepared designs for a possible commercial kitchen, but we don't even have concrete plans to implement that. We're seeking the zoning map amendment generically. Any subsequent change of use would require further review and approval by the village. We completely understand that. But there are no concrete plans right now. Mark is in the process of business planning. And this zoning map amendment would give him much greater flexibility than he would have under an accessory use. An accessory use has to be customary and usual, of course. The business amendment, the map amendment to Business, would allow other than just customary and usual accessory uses for a hotel.
By commercial kitchen, you referring for a restaurant in the hotel or changing the whole premises into a restaurant?
No one ever suggested changing the whole premises into a restaurant. There's room on, there's room, it's the inn at Cooperstown, and it intends to stay the inn at Cooperstown. There's room on the bottom floor that has possibilities for Business. And I spent this morning reviewing the village's comprehensive plan, and it speaks to downtown revitalization, full-time versus seasonal businesses, local shopping opportunities and employment opportunities. And that's exactly what Mark is intending to pursue by this zoning map amendment. So not only is it already adjacent to the Business District, most people that we mentioned this to scratch their head and say, gee, it's not already in the Business District. It's south of the lane and not north of the lane. You have the apartment buildings transitioning to the single family. That's what we're asking is merely a zoning map amendment. Whoa. And we're hoping, there you go. And we're hoping that, there it is, that little sliver between the lane and the Business District is SMK's parcel. And we're just asking that that line be moved to the lane, like I said, to increase Mark's business opportunities with the spare room on the ground floor that he has. No footprint alteration, no one is considering any footprint alterations. And in fact, the plans that Alton View drew up, the only exterior alteration would be movement of two windows on the backside. So no one's talking about changing the use of the inn at Cooperstown. It's going to be the inn at Cooperstown. We're merely asking for this zoning map amendment so that Mark has more business opportunities as he moves forward with his planning. Right now, it's hard for him to attract guests to the inn because there's no place to eat. It may be nice to have a place on the ground floor where not only guests, but locals might have an opportunity to go and eat as well.
Doug, it says, the hotel.
Sorry?
That's an accessory use for a hotel.
If he were to implement the restaurant, I would possibly, I would agree with you. That doesn't prevent a request from R3 to Business. Gene, that's just one thing that he's contemplated and actually engaged architects and spent money to have plans drawn up for. He may not do that, okay? Clearly, no plans, nothing concrete. Have I made that clear?
Yeah, I'm all for helping Mark with his business. I just need to see a reason to change the zoning and you know, if he wants to have retail stores on the first floor, fine, say so, and it makes sense.
Mark, I'm happy to let Mark speak, but Mark doesn't have any specific plans. Okay? And when he has a specific plan, he has to come before the village, probably this board for review, right? It's just a zoning map amendment without any specific plans.
Does this, can I ask, does this, Gene, does this become spot zoning?
Well, no, absolutely not.
Not at all, because it's adjacent to Business District.
No, it's not, it's not spot zoning. Sorry, I apologize for being late, Doug and Mark. I was on the phone. And so I missed the presentation. Is this, so there are no plans, but the idea is that as an inn, it was always built as an inn. This would, because New York State classification or the zoning permits won't allow it to be like you can't have a commercial kitchen. I'm confused by what this will gain the property. Can you explain what this will gain? As opposed to special permits, that he's under a special permit now?
Ellen, it would gain Mark the flexibility in terms of his business planning for other uses beyond the usual and customary uses, which I think everyone would agree could be permitted as accessory uses without any specific plans. And we discussed, Ellen, that Mark did have Alton View draw up some designs for a commercial kitchen. He's not committed even to that plan. He wants to pursue this zoning map amendment to increase his business planning opportunities, which he's in the process of going through right now. So the map amendment to Business would substantially increase those opportunities beyond usual and customary. And Mr. Perman, in addition to it not being spot zoning because it's directly adjacent to the Business District, if you, I spent the morning reviewing your comprehensive plan. It's excellent. And it speaks specifically to, like I said, year-round versus seasonal businesses, local opportunities and business diversification. And that's what Mark is seeking to be able to do.
I'm curious, and I don't have the answer, why why the line was put there in the first place between Business and R3? Because the inn was, has been a business for how long?
Ever.
Ever? So I'm just curious why the line was drawn there and not on the other side of the inn at Cooperstown. It seems like a logical end to that commercial, the Business or Commercial District, whatever it is. I don't have the map in front of me. So it almost seems like it was an oversight, but it's a big property for it to be an oversight.
I was involved with the committee that redrawed through the lines and it didn't occur to us to, you know, it's recently that without speaking to the property owner, I mean, you don't just change something and, you know, it's fully under the property owner. They're relying on the zone they're in. So we didn't change anything other than divvy up the types of residential districts.
Right, but it was already in the residential district is what I mean. So it seems, I mean, at some point that zoning was made and the inn was still an inn and yet it was still designated residential, which seems strange to me. So.
Can you, can you guys hear me at all?
Yeah, Mark, we can hear you.
Okay, what happened was it was commercial, this is my understanding. And then when it was sold to the Cook brothers and became a residence, that's when it changed. Just like 10 Chestnut used to be commercial. But then when the Smith Ford dealership moved out and they were gone for so long, it reverted back to the R3 zone.
Oh, I had no idea the inn had ever been residential.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The Cook family bought it, I don't know, late 1800s or something. And then they had three brothers owned, each brother owned a section, and it was residential for a number of years. And then I think it became, had some office space on the first floor. I think it had a couple of apartments. And then Michael bought it in 85, started restoring it back to a hotel, and then nobody thought to change the zoning. All this would do is give us more maximum flexibility without having jumped through a number of hurdles. We drew up plans for a commercial kitchen in '06 and updated in 2014. The last two years with COVID and the restaurants being open, closed, you know, certain days and stuff, it's got me more thinking on, hmm, I might have to revisit and how I do some things moving forward. Because there's been days, even like December, parts of January, where we had several restaurants closed. And now Alex's is closed as well. We may have to change how we do some things in the future. That's why we don't have anything concrete right now. We want to kind of see what is going to develop. But if it develops, we will need to be able to move and change things quickly and not have to go through, you know, six public hearings and, you know, all kinds of different boards forever. We'll still have to come to everybody for approval, obviously, but it'll just give us a little more flexibility and not as many hurdles to jump through. But that's why the inn was changed back to R3 and actually why 10 Chestnut was changed back to R3 as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting, yeah. But it's been, it's been commercial since 1984.
Well, with a special permit, it's been able to operate as an inn.
Well, that's what I mean, but it's been, it's been operated as a commercial property since, for 30 plus years.
Is there anything, so I haven't seen, is there anything, the special permit that limits you in any way?
Possibly. We haven't looked at every option. I don't know if I could do retail. I don't know if I can do a restaurant. I'm sure they're all non-conforming. Whether I can get a special permit for all of them, I don't know. But, you know, it's just, if I have to move, I'll have to be able to do things, you know, and not take a year to do them.
Yeah, because in terms of this, you know, the commercial kitchen, you could do that now as an accessory use.
We understand that.
Unless the special permit says you can't. And changing it to a Business District, I don't think, Doug, you know more about land use law than I do, I don't think that would let you do something that's not in a special permit.
We would be, Mark would be entitled to pursue any use allowed in the Business, under the Business Zone, which is broader than the R3 and special permit.
So you would know, you would no longer need the special permit because the hotel is allowed?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Jane?
Yep.
Jane, the definition of a hotel, what you're referring to, just for the others, includes food service for both guests and off-site people to come in to the hotel to eat. So that's in the definition of the hotel, and if it's permitted as a hotel inn, which probably is, then that's what you're referring to. If you move to a Business District or if you change it, they're talking about, we got to come in and get other permits in the future. Well, not if you're a retail permitted uses in the Business District, as you probably know, are retail stores and shops, personal service shops, banks, offices, restaurants, theaters, auditoriums, gymnasiums, accessory uses of the other, and mixed occupancy. So once you convert it to a Business District, there's all kinds of things that can be done without ever going to the village and asking permission. It's pretty much wide open for any legal business use. I mean, you can't have sex shops and pornography, I don't believe, but pretty much anything would be available.
We understood that any change of use would trigger the zoning officer's review. And we would let Jackson speak to that.
What, what, what could he do? It's permitted.
One of the advantages that we see.
But in an RA, I think, Richard, what Doug is saying is that in R3, any permitted use would have to be reviewed by zoning officer in a Business District. Mark could change it from an inn to a, Mark, are you a B&amp;B designation now?
We are a hotel.
You are a hotel? Okay, because I thought there was something like you couldn't serve Sherry on the porch or something because of.
Well, I have another question. In reading the letter to the trustees, it mentioned two properties, 12 and 16 Chestnut Street. What was the purpose of mentioning 12 Chestnut Street? If, it sounds like you're only talking about 16 Chestnut Street.
You're exactly correct. And your zoning law requires us to report the names of owners within 500 feet of not only the project property, but also continuously owned properties by the same project sponsor. SMK Enterprises owns both. So we provided the Board of Trustees with all of the names of the owners within 500 feet of both properties. But the zone change is only requested for the inn property.
Okay, now, doesn't SMK or somebody, I thought there was also a property connected to Main Street that came through and a joint was also owned by Mark.
Yes, Mark owns that. So SMK does not.
Okay, so it's SMK, it just owns those two, and, okay, so there's a lead.
180 Main Street is owned by Sherry and I. 12 Chestnut came with 16 Chestnut when we bought it. But that's a logical place to start the residential where 16 is kind of a logical place to end the business. So we don't want to include 12 Chestnut in that. That's going to stay residential for sure.
So that's, that's where you live, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is not, that's not under consideration for any zoning changes.
No, sir.
We just explained that we only provided that because your law requires us to provide names of owners within 500 feet of all continuously owned properties owned by that project sponsor. Have we made that clear?
You have to make. Does anyone have any thoughts? Of the application?
I personally am in support of the zoning change. I mean, I think it is logical. This has been a business for most of the buildings or the parcels lot, made life. And it seems that it makes sense for, maybe not actually most, if it was built in 1984 as a residence. But for the past 37 years, 36 years, something like that, it's been an inn and a business. And even if it were converted to apartments, it would still be allowed in a Business District as a regular use. So it seems like a logical adjustment of the zoning map.
Thank you, Ellen.
I agree with Ellen.
I agree.
Richard?
I'm still thinking. I'm trying to think of what would the consequences. If it is to, if it is to correct a previous oversight or something by village fathers and maybe there were some mothers involved as well in the past, that would be a rationale to do this. But it would certainly make, I think, the value of the property a lot greater. So we need to be aware of anybody criticizing us for doing something that would create a windfall profit if Mark says he wants to sell it now as a business property. See what I mean? It might be justified, and that certainly would be his right to do that, and he could sell it right now either. I mean, it's that one camp. But we have to be careful that it doesn't look like we did something that was injudicious or misconstrued or something of that way.
I don't think it's in our purview to think about what might happen if Mark sells other than if he, if he, if it stopped being, you know, a hotel now, it would be a normal residence structure.
Would the assumption be that HPARB would probably object to the place being torn down and you putting a casino there, for example? That probably would not happen?
The law does not allow for buildings to be torn down unless they are beyond beyond repair. So it's not HPARB, you know, it has no bearing on what HPARB would do.
All right. If somebody wanted to put a bank there at some point?
They could put a bank, they could put a restaurant, they could put a nightclub if they wanted to. Well, I don't know if nightclubs are allowed in the Business District. Not in the residential district, I guess.
They can use it for the allowable uses under the Business zoning. And from here, it would go, if this does get forwarded to the trustees, then it goes to public comment there. So if people are uncomfortable with the changing nature of the neighborhood with the, you know, recent construction next door, then they have the opportunity to voice that for sure.
Right. And, and this is not, because presumably it would expand the uses available to Mark or any subsequent owner that they could do there without going through the special permitting process. But there are still a number of uses that are available in the R3 by special permit. It's just you have to go through the special permitting, public hearing process, and that's onerous to an existing business owner who just wants to possibly.
Stay in Business.
Yeah.
And if I'm, if I may, I would submit the best guide of whether or not this would be judicious. And that is, the report and recommendation is in your hands, is the village's comprehensive plan. And I think what Mark is proposing is entirely consistent with your well-considered comprehensive plan.
One of the benefits or advantages of this property is the significant amount of parking behind the building that for a business, businesses have to deal with when they want to open a business, where are their customers or clients going to park? And that often causes opposition from neighbors and other people concerned with traffic congestion and so forth. This would not be a case in this particular piece of property because of the parking availability on site.
There's plenty of parking.
My view is I'm in favor of the proposal. Is anybody else?
What is the next step for this?
We'd make a motion to recommend that the that the Board of Trustees consider.
Ellen, is that your motion?
Well, I can phrase it a little bit more elegantly. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees approve this zoning change.
I'll second it. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I discuss it. Shouldn't it be to schedule a public hea-
No, the.
It's already scheduled.
So all we have to do is recommend to the trustees.
What is our recommendation that they do? They still have to have, they have the public hearing scheduled.
Okay, okay.
So that, that is my motion, that they approve the zoning change to include 16 Chestnut into the Business District, out of the R3 and into the Business District.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It looks like it's unanimous.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Good to see you again, Doug.
All right. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, you too.
Good evening.
Has everyone had a chance to review the September 21 minutes?
Yes, I have. I mean, it's not a question, it's a question or suggestion regarding the minutes in general. Since it appears that, you know, we haven't met in like, what, three months? Is it possible? And I don't know, but that we have the minutes mailed or transmitted to us maybe within the next month as opposed to waiting for the next meeting?
That makes a ton of sense, yes.
You don't have any memory of that September meeting? I was surprised at how long ago it had been since we'd met.
Me too.
Yeah, I kept feeling like I was missing something, but.
Well, nobody knows time passing during this COVID thing anyway. I think I'm 80 now.
Does anybody have any suggested changes in that?
No.
I'll move to approve the minutes submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the future, if we miss a meeting, I will go ahead and, and Marcia and I will, will make sure that we get the minutes out to everybody so that they're not.
Thank you.
Yes, feel free to remind.
And Jackson. Do anticipate the awning thing coming back by next month?
I think it will, yes. And by then it will have gone through HPARB, and I will have had time to look at it and balance it again. I mean, especially since I'm new to the position, I had looked at maybe three or four signs and no awnings before that. So it's always a problem when somebody wants to get something in at the last minute, and especially if it's, if I haven't had a chance to make sure I know what's actually going on. So I'll never be offended, David, if somebody speaks up and says, hey, this is way out of bounds. Or if I've.
Jackson, I mean, to me, I looked at it and thought.
I know. I thought this is not going to pass the blavy test.
Yeah. So it's good for me to have a sense of that before I bring in front of everybody, because then it just wastes everybody's time. So yeah, we'll have at least that next time around, and I would imagine things will keep coming through.
Yeah, do we know anything, you know, where the house that was torn down across from Basset on Susquehanna? Do we know if anything's happening there?
I actually did not know that it was slated to be torn down because that happened right before I came on board.
Oh, yeah.
I was just driving home one day. I was like, Scott Upner, you cannot do that. I have not yet seen a plan to, for what's going to happen there next.
I know it's simple integrity that owns it, but I, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I slept through whatever procedure went through because.
Well, we didn't, no, that was an, that would have been an HPARB.
Right.
Decision, not us.
I go to the gym five days a week. I have, in which case I pass it twice. I still haven't noticed that it's not there.
It's definitely not there.
Maybe I'd be, it's hard to, you know, it's like proving a negative.
Those guys make quick work of it. They had a hose out there and the whole thing crated out and raked and stuff within like two and a half days or something.
It was amazing how quickly it went.
Yes, it was.
But it was kind of held together with tape and bailing wire, I think. So, okay.
Jackson?
Yes, sir.
The next meeting, would you put on the agenda of the site plan amendments that I put forth?
Yes.
Back a while ago?
Yes.
And And you know, then a week or so before the meeting, I'll send out the the draft plus in response to your request, David, showing how it changes the, the current law.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? Well, it's been great seeing you all again.
You too.
Take care.
All right, stay healthy.
Be healthy. The meeting is adjourned at five P M.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Everything going all right?
Yeah, I just wanted to change my name. I saw I was called Terry instead of Marcia.
Yeah, I, when I let you, I, I don't know why I was asked to let you into the meeting. I was kind of like, oh, I don't know who Terry is.
Okay, well, that was, that was good.
Yep, and I'll get the minutes out to you midday tomorrow, okay?
Oh, the, the other one, yep, and I'll.
They go to Liz and then you need them back by Friday.
I do.
The, is the, is the trustees on the, the fourth Monday or the last Monday or I don't, it seems to kind of like, depending on the length of the week, it kind of moves around and I don't really.
Yeah, it's the fourth, the fourth Monday. Board of Trustees at six thirty.
That is going to be on the one, two, three, four, that'll be on the twenty eighth then.
Yes.
And so you need my report, et cetera. And the minutes by when?
By the Friday before because Jenna has to put together the package for all of them.
Okay, I'll get them out by the end of this week. And it will be totally good, right?
Oh, well, yeah, well, actually, if you look at them, it's whoever. I think what we'll do is if Liz hasn't returned them by Friday, then I'll just send them out with your, I'll send them over to Jenna with just your comments. And with that noted, that it hasn't been reviewed, they haven't been reviewed by everybody.
All right, I've got a real backlog of permits and variances and stuff for Liz to sign. So I think I'll be, I'll be, I'll be harassing her here later this week and I'll include that in my harassment.
Okay, Jackson.
Thanks, Marcia.
All right, good night.